Final, height six, Yankees five.
Good evening, this is the June 8th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First up, we have a couple of extensions. Appeal number 2022-017 Dorothy Potellus?
Potellus.
Potellus, Potellus, 25 Meadow Lane, Riverhead. I move the appeal of Dorothy Potellus, originally granted June 9th, 2022, be extended for a period of one year, thus expiring on June 9th, 2024, for variance and relief from chapter 301, section 11, where proposed front yard setback is 40 feet and the minimum required is 50, where proposed rear yard setback is 40 feet and the minimum required is 60, where proposed side yard setbacks are 10 and 15, minimum required are 25 and 30, where proposed surface coverage is 19.9% and maximum allowed is 15%, and chapter 101, section 9A1C, where proposed garage setback is 10 feet from the side and rear property lines, and the minimum requirement is 20 feet.
Shall move.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the extension has been granted. Next, we have appeal number 2022-24 Tara Lane Associates. I move the appeal of Tara Lane Associates, originally granted July 28th, 2022, be extended for a period of one year, thus expiring July 28th, 024, for variance and relief from town code, chapter 101-60, where proposed warehouse is not permitted use, chapter 101-60, proposed outdoor storage is not permitted, is not permitted use, and 301-61, where proposed rear yard setback, setback, for proposed accessory garage, storage building is eight feet and the required is 25 feet.
Shall move.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. All right. Reserve decision.
Who's got it?
So, this reserve decision is Sarah Kay. It's 111 Second Street, it's appeal 22-47. The reserve decision has, is going to be written and filed in the town clerk's office, and the, uh, the decision itself is for relief of chapter 301-15A1B, where the proposed 43.3 foot side accessory setback minimum allowed is 50 feet, and chapter 301-15A1C, where the proposed five foot rear accessory setback minimum is allowed, is 20 feet, be approved in accordance with the application sketches with amendments thereto, as filed with the building inspector.
Shall move.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay.
Appeal 2022-039 HK Ventures, 4285 Middle Country Road, Calverton, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-116-1-2, industrial C zoning, for variances and or relief from chapter 301-123A, where proposed impervious surface coverage is 65.51% of the total lot area, maximum permitted is 60%, and where proposed building height is 38 feet to center line of roof peak, and the maximum is 30 feet.
All right, counsel, name, address.
Good evening for the applicant, Matthew Ingber, from the law firm of Brown, Altman, and Delio, 538 Broadhollow Road, Suite 301, Melville, New York. So, I'm here this evening for HK Venture's area variance application for the property at 4285 Middle Country Road in Calverton. As a matter of housekeeping, the public notice posting was performed in accordance with the town code, and an affidavit was submitted prior to this evening's hearing. As a reminder, the application was previously presented to this board on December 8th of 2022, on January 12th of 2023, and on March 9th of 2023. We ask that the minutes and expert testimony from those three prior hearings be incorporated into this evening's record. As was more fully discussed at the March 9th hearing, the application was modified to take into account received by the board at the January 12th hearing, so we note that the impervious surface area variance was reduced from 65.51% to 60.72%, and the height of the buildings was reduced from 38 feet to 35 feet. So with that, I would like to open up the hearing to any questions that the board may have, our project team of experts, as well as a representative from the applicant, are they're all here to answer any questions that you may have.
I have no, no other comments.
Anybody else?
No.
Anyone in the audience have anything to say about this application?
Anybody on?
How about the Zoom there, Tracey?
Is anyone on Zoom for?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Have you been sworn in before, young lady?
Not in this matter, sir.
Just raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do. My name is Barbara Blas, and I live in Jamesport. I was just here to determine whether the, the application was still asking for variances and relief, because having read the summons in complaint in connection with the Article 78 before the planning board, it recites that they comply with all town zoning regulations, and I would think that if that was the case, we wouldn't be here, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Well, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anyone on Zoom to be heard on this matter?
All right, counselor, would the, uh, would the amendment have to take place in the petition? Would there have to be an amendment?
Uh, sure, if that's, if, uh, if there's any inaccuracies in the petition, then...
Well, I mean, we haven't approved this yet, but what she's saying is that it was said in the complaint.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm, I'm asking counsel, would that be something that would have to be amended?
Um, that would be for mitigation. Oh, sorry, oh, I thought you were asking, sorry.
Thank you.
The town could address that in its opposition papers. However, a voluntary amendment on your part to the papers would be best.
Okay, yeah, thanks, your comments noted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, Mr. Otto?
Yeah.
You have a resolution, we're ready.
We got it. Appeal number 2022-039, I moved at the appeal of HK Ventures LLC, 4285 Middle Road, Calverton, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-116-1-2, uh, individuals, what is that, in commercial zoning, is that what that is?
Industry.
I'm sorry, it's misspelled, okay. Before I read that, I appreciate the fact that we had a number of meetings, where's the counselor, with you folks, and you took in the recommendations we made as far as getting closer to the code, and we appreciate that, so for variance and relief from town code, chapter 301, section 123A, where proposed impervious surface coverage is 60.72, the goal there was 60, so that's pretty damn close, of the total lot area maximum permitted, and where proposed building height is 35.5 to center line of roof peak, and the maximum permitted 30 feet, be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Shall move.
Second.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so your appeal has been granted.
Thank you.
Good, Tracey.
Appeal 2023-027 Catherine Mosky, 15 Locust Street, Aquabogue, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-87-1-25, RB40 zoning, for variances and or relief from chapter 301-17, where proposed rear yard setback 30 feet, 10 inches, minimum required 60 feet.
Have we sworn you in with this?
No, not with this application now.
Sworn you in quite a few times, but let's go with this one. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Robert Stromsky, I reside at 44 Circle Drive in Jamesport, uh, I'm the architect for the applicant. What you have here is a fairly, um, simple application before you, there's an existing rear patio that is on this house, you had seen this property, um, when we had presented the, the new two-story structure a few years back, when we had obtained variances for the actual main residence. Since then, Ms. Massey has purchased the property, and with the existing rear patio, she's looking to do an open air covered roof for that patio, so there's no sides to the structure, it's just the posts to hold up the structure and the roof to give shade to the existing rear patio that is there, which, because the nature of the lot, which is very small, which is very common in that whole development, we have a rear yard setback that we need relief from. Beyond that, I don't know if you have any questions, we have the owner here, if there's any questions on the application.
I think you should make the applicant speak. Come on up, Catherine.
Stay right there.
All right, we're on the case. Joking. Okay, who has it?
Anyone else to be heard on this matter?
I don't think so.
Nope. Okay, homie. Best.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, with respect to appeal number 2023-027, I move at the appeal of Catherine Massey of 15 Locust Street, Aquabogue, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-87-1-25, in Residence B40, RB40 zoning, for variances and or relief from town code, chapter 301-17, where proposed rear yard setback 30 foot, 10 inches, and minimum required is 60 foot, be approved in accordance with the application and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, filed with the building inspector.
Shall move.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
I guess I'll vote aye too.
Come on now.
All right, so your appeal's been granted, and, uh, you know the rest of the procedure, so best of luck.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Good luck on the end. Good luck to you. You too.
You too.
Appeal 2023-028 Robert Hartman, 47 East Street, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-89-1-29, RB40 zoning, for variances and or relief from chapter 301, where proposed impervious surface is 38.5%, maximum permitted is 15%, chapter 301-17, where proposed rear setback is 11 feet, minimum required is 60 feet, where proposed side yard setback is 6.6 feet, minimum required is 20 feet, be approved in accordance with the application sketches with amendments thereto, if any, filed with the building inspector.
Shall move.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeal's been granted, and again, you know the process.
I do, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Stromsky. You got one more?
Yeah.
Oh, God.
Wow.
Appeal 20...
Three for three, your, your batting average is going up. We'll see.
We'll see.
Appeal 2023-029 Anthony Uruso, 18 River Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-130-4-18.2, RA40 zoning, for variances and or relief from chapter 301-11, where proposed impervious surface is 38.5%, maximum permitted is 15%, chapter 301-11, where proposed side yard accessory setback is 4.1 feet, minimum permitted is 20 feet, chapter 301-11, where proposed rear yard accessory setback is 1.8 feet, and minimum permitted is 20 feet, be granted with a condition that the upstairs of this, of the second story accessory building not be converted to living space nor be finished off, um, in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Shall move.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeal's been granted, and again, you know the process.
I do, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Stromsky. You got one more?
Yeah.
Oh, God.
Wow.
Appeal 20...
Three for three, your, your batting average is going up. We'll see.
We'll see.
Appeal 2023-029 Anthony Uruso, 18 River Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-130-4-18.2, RA40 zoning, for variances and or relief from chapter 301-11, where proposed impervious surface is 38.5%, maximum permitted is 15%, chapter 301-11, where proposed side yard accessory setback is 4.1 feet, minimum permitted is 20 feet, and chapter 301-11, where proposed rear yard accessory setback is 6.6 feet, minimum required is 25 feet, be approved in accordance with the application sketches with amendments thereto, if any, filed with the building inspector.
Shall move.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeal's been granted, and again, you know the process.
I do, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Stromsky. You got one more?
Yeah.
Oh, God.
Wow.
Appeal 20...
Three for three, your, your batting average is going up. We'll see.
We'll see. Appeal 2023-029 Anthony Uruso, 18 River Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map
number 600-130-4-18.2, RA40 zoning, for variances and or relief from chapter 301-11, where proposed impervious surface is 38.5%, maximum permitted is 15%, chapter 301-11, where proposed side yard accessory setback is 4.1 feet, minimum permitted is 20 feet, and chapter 301-11, where proposed rear yard accessory setback is 1.8 feet, minimum permitted is 20 feet,
Oh, I see, it's the county of Suffolk. I'm sorry. Mrs. Stromsky, if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do. Robert Stromsky, I reside at 44 Circle Drive in Jamesport, uh, again, acting as the architect for the applicant, I also have the owner of the property here, any audience, if there's any questions.
Okay.
What we have is in addition to an existing accessory structure, the existing accessory structure is very close to the existing property lines to the side into the rear, we are looking to raise the height of the existing walls of the garage slightly, due to the fact that the existing ceiling height in that existing garage is very, is very tight, and with that, we're also just trying to create some additional storage by raising the roof pitch of the existing footprint on that garage. In addition to, there is a, in addition to that detached structure as well, currently there's a concrete pad with a temporary metal roof structure that is over that, we're looking to replace that temporary structure with in addition to the accessory structure, that structure is slightly higher than the existing structure due to the fact that the client would like to have a lift in, in the garage itself. Mr. Uruso is a shop teacher for a local school district, and does a lot of automobile repair work, and essentially that is what the main use of this detached structure is, just for personal use, nothing is done for, for commercial or for, for fit. If you have any questions beyond that, we also had submitted a bunch of letters from the surrounding property owners that was dropped off to the, uh, planning department today, all of the letters from the property owners that abut the project, and some of the property owners within the neighborhood as well have all stated that they have now opposition to the proposed project as currently designed and proposed.
How many square feet is this all together?
Existing is 795, and we're adding 660.
795, where in the house?
795 is the existing footprint of the garage, and we're adding 660 square feet. That's going to give 1450 as a total footprint.
So that's the total footprint on the first floor, and then the second floor, how many square feet on the second floor?
The second floor would be within, it doesn't go all the way, um, so it would be a fraction of the 795, so you're probably looking at roughly maybe 750.
So what's the plans for upstairs, you said storage?
Just storage.
Seems like an awful big space for storage. What kind of cars will be working on here?
I would like to have the owner explain that.
Kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Tony Uruso, I live at 18 River Avenue in Riverhead.
Okay, Tony, just pull it up a little bit, there you go. Bingo.
I, I just find it a little odd that your house is not very big.
It, it isn't, I've been getting a lot of opposition from my wife about that as well.
Okay, well, come on up here, no, just kidding, so, but this is obviously going to be a man's cave, and you're going to work on cars, and you're going to put a car lift in and all these other things.
Correct.
Do you have any intentions to rent or finish the upstairs space, any intentions?
None, it's just for storage for all the cars that we have currently.
None in the near future, none in three years, none in six years, never?
With, the plan is to finish the garage, and then we'll be back here to do the house next, but I'm a car guy.
And you're going to say you want to add on to the house eventually?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so, so would you, would you be, would you object if we put a condition on it that the upstairs is not to be finished space? Would you object to that?
No, I wouldn't object to that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the board have any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions? Anybody on Zoom?
Who has this resolution?
He's got it.
Excuse me, let me ask you another, Rob, or Robert?
Yes.
That, uh, storage area, is that closed in at all, is that open?
It's just one large open space.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Any proposed bathrooms, Rob?
Not in the structure at all, there's no proposal.
Okay. So, if we have a resolution, we could find it?
We got it.
We got it.
Yeah.
So we can put a condition that the upstairs is not to be converted to living space? As part of the grant of variance.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, with respect to appeal number 2023-029, I move at the appeal of Anthony Uruso, at 18 River Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map 600-130-4-18.2, which is in Residence A40 zoning, for variances and or relief from town code, chapter 301-11, where proposed impervious surface is 38.5%, maximum permitted is 15%, chapter 301-11, where proposed side accessory setback is 4.1 feet, minimum permitted is 20 feet, chapter 301-11, where proposed rear yard accessory setback is 1.8 feet, and minimum permitted is 20 feet, be granted with a condition that the upstairs of this, of the second story accessory building not be converted to living space nor be finished off, um, in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Shall move.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
And Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. I vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'm done.
I don't think the Yankees could do better than you did tonight, three for three.
I hope none of the other architects in town are watching.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Appeal 2023-013, oh, I'm sorry, not that one, appeal 2023-030 Francis McVay, 1589 Peconic Bay Boulevard, Laurel, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-71-2-32, RB40 zoning, for variances and or relief from chapter 301-15A1A, greenhouse of 10 by 15 feet, and front yard not permitted.
Step up to the microphone, Mr. McVay. Pull the microphone down for you.
Way down, right?
Well, I'm not making any jokes, I would not stoop that level. Just raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do, I do.
Name your, your name and address.
Francis McVay, 1589 Peconic Bay Boulevard, 11948 Laurel.
And what are you before us for?
Pardon me?
What are you here for?
I am here that I, I built a, a greenhouse, I didn't realize I needed a permit, a 15 by 10 greenhouse on my property, and when I was building a little swimming pool on my, my property, the town said, well, where's your permit for the, for the greenhouse? I said, whoa, I didn't realize I needed a greenhouse permit for a 15 by 10 greenhouse.
How long did it take you to build that?
A day and a half. I did it myself. As a kid.
Thank you.
You won't.
It is considered a structure, and it does require a permit, unfortunately.
I didn't realize that, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that.
Okay.
Well, you're originally from Queens, so...
I am a Queens kid.
Yes, okay.
A flushing boy.
Yeah. All right, anyone else to be heard on this, uh, very important matter? No? Let's have a reading. Zoom, no, we got, anybody on Zoom that wants to be heard on this matter? I didn't think so.
Thank you.
Us Brooklyn guys always try, try to take care of...
I see, being very complete.
So the appeal of 23-30 is I move the appeal of Francis McVay of 1589 Peconic Bay Boulevard, Laurel, tax map number is 71-2-32, it's in the zoning Residence B District, which is RB40, for variances and relief from town code, chapter 301-15A1A, greenhouse 10 by 15, and the front yard is not permitted, be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, filed with the building inspector.
Shall move.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Oh, thank you.
So good luck with your greenhouse.
Thank you, I'm going to be...
I'm going to be legitimate plants. It's going to be legitimate.
Thank you for coming in.
Take care, Mr. McVay.
Thank you, thank you, nice meeting everybody.
Thank you.
Appeal 2023-013, Corley Bayfront LLC, 12 Phillips Lane, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-70-2-50.3, RB40 zoning for variances and or relief from Chapter 301-17, where proposed side yard 6.4 feet when minimum 25 feet required. Chapter 301-17, where proposed combined side yard 13.3 feet when minimum 55 feet required. And Chapter 301-15A1C, where proposed accessory structure setback 6.3 feet when minimum 20 feet required, was adjourned from May 25, 2023.
We've sworn you in before, just state your name and your address.
Anthony Portillo, Architect, 10020 Main Road, Mattel Park.
Thank you.
Sure. How are you today, boy?
Good, Mr. Portillo.
Nice to see you guys.
Could you tell us that it got reposted?
Yes, it's been, it was posted the day after the year.
I'll give you this back.
And, uh-
And you have any proof of that?
I have a photo.
Like a date photo?
I don't have a printed photo. I can provide a printed photo to your office, but it was, it basically stayed up.
Is it dated?
It's dated the 18th. I can send it to you guys.
Give her a copy of that.
Actually, I'm sorry, it's dated the 25th.
Okay.
The 18th was up one prior that-
Okay.
Where we said it wasn't posted, but it was, either way.
And we'll see if anybody disputes that.
Okay. But it's basically been up since, uh-
You have 10 minutes.
Been up since the last meeting and stayed up. We actually checked on it a few times to make sure there wasn't any failures in our sign.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, so let's get on to the matter.
Sure. Not to, I don't want to belabor it, so I'm just going to sort of repeat or kind of just recap where we left off last time and sort of prior to that, to like the first hearing or some comments that the neighboring residents had. We had a few schedulings to get, to try to meet with the neighbors, you know, try to get them all in a room. Didn't really work out that well, but we were able to meet with one of the neighbors, which was the one directly to, the neighbor directly to the east of the property that I, you know, we thought had, you know, the most concerns. So we were, we sort of took those concerns and revised our design. And we also were listening to some of the other neighbors, and we thought that we did some things to revise our design to relieve some of their concerns. We sent that email out of the design to all the neighbors. At one point, we decided, well, we think we've done all we can do at this point and think that our approach makes a lot of sense. So some of the things we did is we aligned the poolhouse and the pool to basically act, the poolhouse to act as like a sound and visual barrier of the pool, because it's one of their concerns. We pulled the pool and poolhouse further off the bluff as well to really not have any viewshed issues with the neighbor to the east that's closest to the bluff. We actually, the pool in the, in the poolhouse proposed is basically aligned with the rear of the existing house that we are demolishing, so we're not even encroaching past that home. We shifted the main structure so that we were further off the property line we first were proposing. And the structure, we moved it a little tighter against the pool and further away from the neighbor that's behind the neighbor that's close to the bluff on the east side. So those were really the two neighbors that we thought had the most concerns that we were trying to, you know, come up with a design that could sort of alleviate both. So we have centered essentially the building, which is somewhat in line with, well, the existing building is probably hugging closer to the west property line. So we sort of centered the building, kind of centered everything on the property, which unfortunately, you know, to get any building on this property due to the limitations of the, you know, the property, we do need these side yard variances. Just to state again, you know, we're not here asking for anything but the two side yard variances, looking for height variances or things like that. We did, you know, we did hear about some overshadowing, so we did actually lower the pitch of the building. So we did drop the building about a foot compared to the original proposal as well. That was something to note. So I think, you know, I think that we took out the infinity portion of the pool, which, you know, was a noise concern. We are proposing to put the pool equipment underneath the poolhouse for another noise concern. So I think, you know, my opinion, just hearing what the neighbors had to say at the first hearing, you know, I think in working with some of the neighbors, we've tried to really meet those concerns or as best of our ability. I think just unfortunately, due to the limitations of the site and where we are, that, you know, there's some things that are probably not doable, so.
Understood.
That's just a recap of where we left off.
So based on the last meeting we had, I think the owners or the proposed owners that are going to build this house are going to live there?
That's what I believe.
Can I believe they're here in the audience?
They are.
And you did give a good, a human side approach to it, which sounded very simplistic. But some of the neighbors I know are still upset, and there's some people that want us to put conditions on it, some of them being reasonable, some not being reasonable. So a couple of them I wanted to address was one of the things that they asked us to do is to have the properties resurveyed. Well, they have to be resurveyed anyway after the building is built, because there's a requirement of the zoning board of appeals to have a final survey done and recorded. But we certainly can't ask any of the adjoining property owners unless they own properties on both sides, but a survey is a survey. So I don't think that, I mean, it seems to be an unreasonable request because it's already going to be in place anyway for inspection. So I don't think that's a problem. Another contingency that they had talked about, I have to just quickly look at my notes. They wanted the fence to not be on the property line. They don't want to share the fence. Well, you know, sometimes people put a fence an inch or two inches off the property line. Sometimes they put them over the other side of the line. The laws kind of have changed a little. They allow fences to be even over a foot now on the other property line. But then you're dealing with adverse possession, and that's something that you may want to avoid down the road. So place your fencing very carefully on the inside of your property line if you can. And I would recommend that. And let that be seen on the final surveys when it's recorded with the building department. The other contingency that I thought was interesting, they wanted the stormwater runoff from the proposed pool landscape, so and so. All of that has to be contained on the property anyway, under the Town Code.
Correct.
So it doesn't need to be a condition or a contingency or whatever you want to call that. And the fence that's running on parallel to the bluff, that should be reviewed by the planning department because the planning board is the actual administrator when it comes to any kind of bluff line. So that, just keep that in mind. And I don't know how far that has to go, but I would recommend that you check with the planning department on that, okay?
Sure.
So that being said, I don't think I have any other objections. And let's see if anybody else has to say anything.
Anyone in the audience? Step up.
Can I just state on the fence, we are showing it like two feet off the property line.
It's fine, I know you're showing it, but this is what they were asking for, and I wanted to give a reason why.
Sure.
That we don't have to, we don't have to make it that.
Okay.
That's all.
Just state your name and your address. You've been sworn in before.
Dan Teeman, 1379 Peconic Bay Boulevard.
Let's go.
Thank you for taking the time to once again hear our concerns regarding the proposed tear down, the complete footprint repositioning and significant expansion of property at 12 Phillips Lane by Corley Bayfront LLC. We have shared some detail in our previous hearings about our concerns regarding the variance. Just to recap real quick, we wanted to just say that they would maybe be bringing about significant and undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood to serve the quiet enjoyment of the home and to damage the value of our property financially. We would also like to briefly just note two points that arose from the May 25 hearing. The first is that the architect stated that it was not possible to build a structure on 12 Phillips Lane without incurring such significant changes. And the house-
Recording in progress.
And the house currently sitting on the lot would suggest otherwise. There is a house there now. Second point is just that in addressing our suggestion that the proposed footprint repositioning and expansion be situated along the western boundary of the property as the members of Corley Bayfront LLC also own the adjoining Bayfront property at 23 Phillips Lane, the architect suggested that positioning the builds nearer that property line was not considered, as it would potentially damage the value of 23 Phillips Lane should the LLC members wish to sell it in the future. So should not the same consideration be given to our property? Corley Bayfront LLC stated on May 25 hearing that they only wish to improve their property, and that's an understandable desire, but it seems like it's coming at the expense of ours, which is our concern. Just in summary, we all, we will again end with the fact that other area properties have been successfully and sympathetically updated. This has been done with respect to the other houses in the area, respecting the character and staying within the footprint of the properties, original buildings. And we respectfully ask that the current request for variances on 12 Phillips Lane be rejected outright by the zoning board due to these concerns. We also included again the rendering of the deue from our house and what will be, should this plan go ahead, to illustrate the enormous impact of this request of the variance. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Tracy, we received two letters regarding this application, correct? Was one of the letters your letter?
The other one was the contingencies. And I read them.
Okay. Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Anyone on Zoom to be heard on this matter? Okay, let's have a reserved decision in our next meeting. Our council can write up our decision, and let's move it on. Who's got it? You don't have to read it, but you have to-
Move to reserve.
Yeah.
Go ahead, has it.
Okay. So Chairman, with respect to-
Can I, can I speak? I'm on Zoom.
We asked you. Speak up, who are you?
Tracy, I muted everybody, and I didn't-
Have you been sworn in before?
I'm very old, so I don't, I didn't know that I had on-
Have you been sworn in before?
Yes, I have.
State your name and your address.
Henry Kohler, 1392 Peconic Bay Boulevard, right next door to the development.
I know who you are now.
Go ahead.
Okay, great, yes, and I am the person that sent the letter with the six contingencies, which we want all of them adhere to or else we do object to the plan. So what I'd like to say now is just an observation. At the last meeting, the architect, Anthony, said that they had decided to go ahead with a meeting with just me rather than all of the neighbors because the project had the most impact on our property. I just want to say for the record that, as you know, we are, we have a cottage. We use it in the summertime. The three other people that were at that meeting lived there year-round, and they had objections. So from my point of view, they had more impact on their lives than this will have on our summertime vacationing in Jamesport. So just putting that up there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to be heard?